...of the Arts Education Census. At an approximate cost of $60,000, we hope to implement the census in fiscal year 16. This will tell us important information about the presence of arts education in Maine schools. Once we have this information, we'll be able to target those areas of the state that have the most need in implementing arts education planning, professional development, grants, and more. In following this spending history of the agency and our key personnel in this area. And there's one initiative for this program. It's found on page A106, and it will make a limited period part-time office associate one position permanent. This position is funded with existing federal grant funds to assist with administration of federal grants, as well as maintaining field communications and assisting with various programs. And the final program is our sponsored program, Other Special Revenues Fund, which is found on A106 of the committee copy. The Maine Arts Commission receives additional funding from various sources in order to fulfill its mission. This has typically manifested itself in the form of grants from private corporate and foundation donors. In the past, funds have been received to improve newly created structures. Funds are utilized to support improvements in infrastructure, and foundations have provided support to help students enhance their education. Support from the Betterment Fund, the Jean Cook Fund, the Samuel I Cohen Fund Foundation has allowed the Maine Arts Commission to bring schools wishing to transport students to cultural destinations through our Ticket to Ride program. This program has run for five years and transported almost 8,000 students to venues that provide cultural experiences, enhancing Maine students' education. Last year, we also received funds from the MetLife Foundation to support teaching artist training and workshops for our new creative agent program. We've also received funds from the Maine Community Foundation to support workshops, fellowships, and the scholarship program. The Other Special Revenues Fund also includes the Percent for Art Fund. The Maine Arts Commission manages the process but does not oversee the dollars connected to the Percent for Art Act. Rather, the Maine Arts Commission facilitates the Percent for Art selection process and makes sure the decisions are made in a fair and equitable manner. At the beginning of the process, a committee of five members is established to evaluate proposals and recommend artists to the commission. The committee is constituted of two site representatives, two art voices from the community, and the project architect. The Maine Arts Commission assists the committee by managing its administrative duties like processing submissions, generating presentations, scheduling meetings, contacting selected artists, archiving projects, and being a knowledgeable resource about the state of art in Maine. The contracting agency retains final authority over the selection of the artwork, but the Maine Arts Commission ensures the process is efficient, unbiased, and that the site has a diverse range of art to consider. The Percent for Art process is designed not only to commission artwork but to build community. The process encourages discussions relating to community, history, progress, values, and cultural identity, and there are currently 10 and counting Percent for Art projects in process. Following this spending history of the agency and key personnel in that area, and this concludes my testimony for the Maine Arts Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hi, Señor. Questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Richards, for being with us, and thank you for the wonderful work you're doing for our state.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Peter Merrill speaking for the Cultural Affairs Council. Good morning.
Good morning. Representative Rotundo, Senator Langley, Representative Cornfield, my name is Peter Merrill. I am the chairman of the Maine State Cultural Affairs Council, and I don't mean to confuse the appropriators, but like most of you, I volunteer my time in civic, cultural, charitable organizations, and I am a trustee of the Maine Historical Society, which in turn asked me to serve as their representative on the Cultural Affairs Council, which in turn led me here today. The Cultural Affairs Council was established in 1991 to ensure a coordinated, integrated system of cultural resource programming and projects, and to ensure support for the cultural heritage institutions and activities of the state. We have a small budget and a key role. The members, and I've attached, there's an organizational chart and a list of members attached to the testimony. The organizations are the Maine Arts Commission, you just heard the great work that they do, Maine Historic Preservation Commission, the Maine Library Commission, the Maine State Museum Commission, the Maine Humanities Council, the Historical Society, and the State Archives. Each organization appoints two members to the council, usually the chair and vice-chair of their respective organizations. The governor's office has an ex officio member as well as the directors of the agencies. Statutory duties are listed, basically coordinating budget requests, providing a form for inter-agency planning, liaison for distribution of notices, that sort of thing. We prepare a joint annual report that comes around to you later in the year. We are required to meet with the phone commission and the state law library. We chose not to be part members of the council but just to coordinate our activities and theirs, and we administer the New Century Community Program. Let me give you two brief examples of how this coordination works really well. The archives, the museum, and the library are sharing one person to digitize a lot of their documents so that they'll be available to people over the internet throughout the state without having to come down to it. And I don't understand the arcane business of state personnel, but I suspect that was pretty challenging to be able to do that, but that's a perfect example of what works very well. Another example is the Arts Commission and the Humanities Council have a joint grant program. Over the last couple of years, they've handed out 27 grants, 19 towns, $22,000 and a half dollars, so very small grants throughout the state. Which takes me to the New Century Community Program. That was created by the legislature in 1999 to preserve the state's historic resources, properties, artifacts, documents, to improve educational resources, to enhance community and economic development through strengthening the cultural resources, many of which Mr. Richards spoke about. Originally funded, it's General Fund appropriation, initially $3.2 million, followed by $530,000. Those are followed by two bond issues in 2005, it was a million dollars general obligation bond. In 2007, there was another $2 million. In 2010, the General Fund appropriation to the council was about $60,000. Today, it's just under $40,000. The beauty of the New Century Community Program, and really what built the legislative support for the General Fund bond issues, is that it reaches out to locally-based cultural organizations across the state. It's something that every small main street has a small cultural affairs group, or an arts group, or a historical society, and it's reaching out to all of those small groups that makes the thing so successful and has made the program so successful. Our directors offer a broad combination of experience, wisdom, and fresh perspective. I think five of the seven directors are new. However, most of them were promoted from within after a nationwide search. So, again, for those who think that you have to go across the board to find expertise, these directors show that it's not necessarily true. What they share in common is an unabashed enthusiasm for what they do. They love their jobs. I think this was obvious when we visited with the education committee, and Mr. Anderson started talking about the, the Humanities Council started talking about the poetry program they have for the medical personnel who work in emergency rooms, and just the impact that has and how that's carried on across the country and in other venues as well. And, I mean, the committee got enthusiastic, there was a lot of back and forth. It's that sort of thing that these directors bring to their job, which I certainly appreciate. We hope to, the council and the agencies hope to build on our past success. As we move to the, our bicentennial, we think that the council and the agencies would be an excellent forum for planning and executing those activities. There'll be major stuff here, of course, but reaching out to all of those small arts and cultural organizations, historic organizations throughout the state, we can play a key role in doing that. We appreciate your past support, look forward to earning your continued support in the future. Thank you very much.
Senator Valentinio. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Is there a budget for just the staffing of it? I see the money that you have here for the New Century Program.
There's...
But I'm just wondering, is there another budget for administration or anything?
Keyword here is volunteer.
Okay.
My bosses generously allowed me to spend, for instance, a few hours this morning over here. But the council itself relies on volunteers, and each of the member agencies provides staff support. So, the Historic Preservation, staff takes minutes of our meetings, the library usually provides a meeting room for us, that sort of thing. For a pretty good party.
Actually, that leads to my next question. It does seem like a very good party. Why you sat down here, you meet with the Maine Film Commission and the state law library, and you said in your testimony that they decided not to be members of the program? It seems like a good deal. Why would they not be members of the program? Is there, I was just wondering, is there a fee that you charge?
No, no, no.
Join a membership fee, or why did somebody not...
I think when the council was created, the agencies had been under the Department of Education, and it was important for them to be, they have a much broader mission than just education and supporting schools. They knew that, but it's a broader mission. And so, they were brought out from under the department, and the council was created to coordinate those activities. I think at the time, those two organizations were asked if they wanted to, and it was something new, they simply declined, and the legislation wanted to make sure that the coordination occurred nevertheless, and so that's why it's in our statutory responsibility.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Thank you very much.
Please convey to the other council members that we're grateful for their service.
I will do that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shuttleworth, yes?
Yes.
Sitting in the back, which is why you have to see him. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Senator Langley, Representative Rotundo, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Educational and Cultural Affairs. My name is Earl Shuttleworth, and I'm the director of the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. I'm here today to present testimony in support of those departmental items presented in the biennial budget. There are three program areas that I will go over with you. The first is called the Historic Commercial Rehabilitation Fund. Part A request for the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Commercial Rehabilitation Fund is found on A389. One of the agency's core programs is to provide assistance to owners of income-producing properties who are eligible to make federal and state historic preservation tax credits for buildings that are listed in or eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. The federal tax credit program has been in existence since 1976, and the state credit was significantly revamped in 2008. So, particularly since 2008, we've had a great deal of very positive activity across the state in this program. The account was established to receive fees for the certification of projects that qualify for the Maine rehabilitation credit. However, the commission has not as yet instituted a fee for the following reasons. One, to date, virtually all of the projects have used the federal credit as well as the state. The state program's rules do not require a separate application to review for projects that seek the federal credit. Federal funds support the agency staff that administers the federal program, and the level of activity for both the federal and state programs has not reached the volume to require additional staff. So, what we do in this case, as you'll see from the chart, and we have for several years, is just ask the budget office to put in a $500 placeholder to keep that account open in case there was a significant change in the operation of this program, but we don't at this point anticipate it. And I think the wisdom here is that we do receive the federal funding to carry out this program. We do not wish to add any additional cost to uses of this program, and at this point, we can cover the costs accordingly. Moving on to the Historic Preservation Commission, this is the central program. The Part A request for the Maine Historic Preservation Commission is found on A390. The Maine Historic Preservation Commission was established by the legislature in 1971 to identify, evaluate, and protect Maine's historic, archaeological, and architectural resources under both state and federal law. The National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 requires the commission to do the following: Review and comment on all federally funded and federally licensed undertakings. Nominate buildings, sites, and districts to the National Register of Historic Places. Assist owners of historic buildings seeking the historic rehabilitation tax credit. Survey the state's historic and prehistoric resources. Develop a state historic preservation plan. Assist municipalities in becoming certified local governments. That essentially means that if a municipality, and they're currently 10 in Maine, wish to participate in a national program of historic preservation, they put forward their historic, their local historic preservation ordinance, and we review that, and the federal government reviews it, and if they meet the test, then they can receive, there's 10% of the federal money that comes to the state each year means that they can participate in a competitive basis toward money for programs at the local level in their community. And the last two, we monitor covenants on properties restored with federal assistance. That includes all of the lighthouses along the coast that have been deaccessed by the Coast Guard in recent years. And finally, we provide education by means of workshops, conferences, lectures, and publications. Looking at the chart here, you will see there are three spending accounts. The General Fund, we're looking for $311,000 in '06, and $306,000 in '07. That then is the money that the state uses to match with the next account, which is the federal money. And where actually, the figures that you see in '06 and '07 are allotment ceilings. We will probably be receiving around $700,000 in federal each year in those two years. This has been a pattern the past few years. And the final fund is a special revenue account. And as you can see there, $318,000 and $316,000 are, again, allotment figures. The money that comes in is a little bit less, and the purpose of this is primarily for archaeological work. The Maine Historic Preservation Commission has worked very cooperatively for many years with the Department of Transportation in anticipating bridge and road construction that might affect historic and archaeological properties. And we're able to keep a small staff to be able to go out and do the excavations, and to do the rescue work, and to process the artifacts, so that our heritage is conserved and yet at the same time, the road program can go forward. In this particular area, we have a budget initiative, General Fund, small increase for the secretary associate position to a secretary specialist position. You can see the figures there. There's a retroactive payment, and then the two payments that would be scheduled for the upcoming budget. Moving on to the final section, Historic Preservation Revolving Fund. This is our newest program. The Part A request can be found on A391. Program description: This account is established to receive funds from a bond issue approved by the voters in June of 2010, and actually, the rules have been completed and have been accepted, so that's now outdated. Title 27, Section 512 establishes the Historic Preservation Revolving Loan Fund with the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. The program will provide funds to qualified nonprofit historic preservation organizations in the state for the purpose of the acquisition of endangered historic properties of local, state, or national significance as determined by the commission. The properties will then be marketed to new owners who agree to preserve, rehabilitate, or restore the properties as necessary, subject to historic preservation easements or covenants held by the qualified nonprofit. Now, as you can see in the funding history here, 2014, the $3,000 figure was actually an allotment, not an actual call-in of funds from the bond. The $200,000 in '15 was actually calling $200,000 from the $1.2 million loan fund because we had anticipated a project. That project was then put on hold, but we now have two new applications pending. So, and then we keep placeholders in '16 and '17 anticipating that there will be projects coming forward. So that gives you a quick overview of our programs, and in concluding my testimony, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good morning, Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions, real quick.
Sure.
On the third category of spending, which I think you said was mostly dedicated to archaeological...
Yes.
What's the source of the revenue there?
It's primarily the Department of Transportation. State and federal funds that are assigned to road and bridge projects, of which they're required to spend a certain amount of funding if an archaeological project is involved.
And lastly, the Historic Preservation Revolving Fund you just talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Just curious, if it was passed by the voters in 2010, how come it's taken so long to, where it's finally going to start issuing late?
Well, there was, as you may recall, there was a period where there was a hold on bonds.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah.
This is one of my... I understand. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Shuttleworth, thank you very much for being with us, and thank you for your continuing service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Bromwich, yes?
Good morning.
Good morning. Senators Emper and Langley, Representatives Rotundo and Cornfield, and members of the joint committees, good morning. Thank you very much for having us here. My name is Steve Bromwich. I'm the executive director of the Maine Historical Society. I am here today to present testimony in support of items from Maine Historical Society in the biennial budget for 2016 and '17. Incorporated by the state of Maine in 1822, the Maine Historical Society is the capital of the state historic society in the United States, and one of the first cultural organizations to be chartered by the legislature of Maine. We were founded just after Maine was there. Though MHS is a private nonprofit organization, it has from its inception received ongoing state support, including modest annual approach to creations from the General Fund since the 1940s. In the mid-1990s, Maine Historical became a full member of the Maine Cultural Affairs Council. The mission of Maine Historical Society is to promote the understanding and enjoyment of Maine history for all Maine people. To carry out this mission, MHS collects, preserves, and exhibits important historical resources, facilitates research into family, local, regional, and national history, and provides educational opportunities to engage the public and make history accessible and meaningful. Headquartered in Portland, MHS serves a statewide audience and is organized through four major program areas. Brown Research Library manages one of the most comprehensive collections of archival material related to Maine history in the state, and serves researchers, scholars, educators, students, the general public, and professionals across many fields. In recent years, we have preserved various significant collections related to major Maine institutions, including the Central Maine Power Company, Bangor Theological Seminary, the Portland Company, and many, many others. Through our library program, MHS also publishes the scholarly journal Maine History in partnership with the History Department at the University of Maine. Our museum in Portland offers interpretive exhibitions that explore diverse topics in Maine history drawn from our collections of 15,000 artifacts. The museum also includes the Wajgerfong Fellow House, which is a national historic landmark. Our education programs provide educators, students, and the public with innovative programs designed to increase knowledge of Maine history, connect students to their communities, and build a variety of skills. Finally, and the focus of our funding that I'll talk to you about is the Maine Memory Network, which is a state, nationally-recognized digital museum that empowers Maine communities to share and engage their history. Through Maine Memory, Maine Historical is deeply involved in helping communities in every corner of Maine, preserve, explore, and share their history. Today's Maine Historical serves nearly 500,000 people each year in Portland through outreach programs and online. MHS has a staff of 17 full-time and 15 part-time employees with a current annual operating budget of just under $2 million. In the proposed biennial budget for 2016 and '17, MHS would receive $44,864 annually from the state of Maine General Fund. Sorry, that's on page 832 if you have not found it yet. Or that's approximately 2.2% of our budget. The range of our funding comes from membership, earned income, and private corporate foundation and federal resources. All state funds received by the Maine Historical support the administration, development, and outreach services of the Maine Memory Network. Maine Memory was launched in 2001 as an online digital archive whose goal was to radically expand access to collection, historical collections across the state. It has since evolved into a robust platform for a wide range of historical interest and activities. Maine Memory now includes more than 50,000 historical items contributed by more than 270 organizations across Maine, hundreds of online exhibits, a comprehensive introduction to Maine history, and much more. Maine Historical Society provides technological infrastructure to support Maine Memory and extensive free training and support to local historical societies, libraries, and schools as they participate. And one of the materials, things I included in my materials is a list, a sample list of the projects we've supported around the state in the last couple of years, and a list of those 270 partners. Every one of those organizations is taking advantage of this infrastructure and receiving free training and support. Our staff has been out and worked with them on a whole variety of collections, digitization issues and such. So, I think when you look at that list, you'd likely find some great materials and stories related to your neighborhood. Our model recognizes the expertise of local partners and empowers them to participate and be represented in the telling of Maine history in previously unimaginable ways. These efforts are transforming how history is imagined and practiced in Maine, and helping build 21st century skills and capacity in communities throughout the state. Annual operating costs for Maine Memory are approximately $250,000 in a year. In the current year, funding, state funding accounts for about 18% of that, of its operations. Like most agencies with state appropriation, Maine Historical has had a steady decline in funding in the last decade. Sustaining Maine Memory as a free and vital public resource is one of Maine Historical's foremost strategic priorities. The state's general fund allocation, with never more than 20% of the total budget for Maine Memory, remains absolutely essential to its sustainability. So, to conclude, I want to make a plug for history. History is not just a backward-looking endeavor. History is about who we as Mainers are, where we are today, and where we are headed. History is comprehensive and reflects all aspects of life in Maine. It is about economics, the environment, and all the things that we value and do. It is about people, place, and community. And as everybody in this room knows and feels in their bones, Maine is a unique and very special place. That sense of place is defined by our history in a very profound way. Maine history and what it tells us holds many of the keys that will help us solve the challenges we face as a state, and help us point, help point us toward the opportunities that will drive Maine's future vitality. Maine Historical Society is committed to helping meet that process. Thank you for your time and the critical funding you provide for our work, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Representative Mark has a question.
Thank you very much. Do you mind telling me how the Board of Trustees are selected?
Sure. There's a nomination process. Again, we're private nonprofits, so it's worth about 28 trustees. Our bylaws say that can go up to 32. There's nominations from memberships from the public that go to our board. We have a nominating committee that we meet with potential trustees, talk to them, and then put forward and then put to the membership for a vote.
As I looked at the board, 18 of them come from 28, come from four communities, St. Louis, Yarmouth, Portland, and South Portland. Five of them come from outside Pumbal County. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, you actually identified a really key strategic issue for us. I mean, it's interesting, organizations like ours until 10 or 15 years ago had statewide purview but a very difficult time reaching out beyond and serving the state in a full meaningful way. So, one of the things Maine Memory Network has done has allowed us to really develop programs. We've had state staff in Morrista County and around the state for a number of years. So, it's only truly, I think, in a lot of very active ways that we've fulfilled that statewide purview and mandate in the last 10 or 15 years, largely through Maine Memory. So, we've identified one of our key institutional priorities is changing our board and our governance to reflect that fact. So, our trustees for a union in southwest harbor of many ways, in Connecticut, or many ways Guinea pigs, who are helping... pigs who are helping us figure out the mechanics of running a place, where people have been far from places. But it's a very high priority for us.
I hope next time you come for us, the numbers change a little bit.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr.... Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Valentino.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you. Did, was Mary Nelson, Representative Mary Nelson, on the Board of Trustees?
She was, indeed.
That's what I thought she was. And just going through on the Board of Trustees, I see a lot of people who are up here who also contribute heavily in for their donations. And so that might be a factor also on the Board of Trustees because they have a lot of contacts. Because certainly, the state of Maine, giving you $45,000 a year, you cannot operate on that. So you, I'm sure you contact a lot of people that have fundraising ability to get the money that you need. Is that be correct?
Yeah, that's very true. But it, you know, it's interesting, you know, having now been at the helm for about two and a half years, you know, the evolution of boards of trustees and how they reflect the needs of the organization at a particular moment in the institution's life. So I think a lot of what we've been doing is really gearing up our infrastructure to tactic, create opportunities we see in the decade ahead. So I think our board will evolve to reflect that, where we are, where we're serving the people, and where resources are broadly understood.
And I guess I also want to say is that I have spent many, many, many hours there doing research and it is absolutely amazing. You can find every birth record for your entire family going back, marriage license, copies of everything, their names. Very interesting things. I find your staff extremely helpful on it. I loved all the Portland pictures of my father's house that had been torn down. It is an amazing resource for the state of Maine where so many times people are not appreciating the past. And I certainly appreciate that it's up online digitally, that you can go online and you can research all of those hundreds of thousands of pictures and go in there. I think it's an unbelievable gem that we have in the state of Maine and it's unfortunate that more people don't know about it or use it because it is preserving history.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr....
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson? I want to remind everybody that the clock that we're looking at did not spring ahead an hour and so it's almost noon. We have formal presentations and we have 15 people who would like to testify before our other public hearing begins at 1 o'clock. So that's not to silence anyone, it's just to keep people mindful of the time constraints of the work. Good morning.
Good morning. Senator Angela, Representative Rotundo, Senator Langley, Representative Cornfield, and members of the committees, my name is Hayden Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the Maine Humanities Council. The council is an independent statewide nonprofit that supports lifelong learning. We serve as the state of Maine affiliate of the National Endowment for the Humanities and the Library of Congress Center for the Book. We provide educational programs throughout the state addressing a range of needs including literacy, promotion of reading, teacher enrichment, community history, and cultural tourism. Our constituents include low-literacy adults, public school teachers, veterans, domestic violence agencies, prisoners, healthcare workers, library patrons, and general audiences. The council conducts direct programs and also provides matching grants for community cultural activities. All funding that the council receives from the state of Maine is distributed as grants to communities throughout the state. These grants offer an avenue for community-based cultural organizations, schools, and libraries to mount public programs on a wide range of local history and other cultural topics. 100% of the funding received from the state of Maine is distributed to the state through matching grants. The council does not retain any funds at all to cover overhead personnel or administrative costs. Projects to be funded are selected by a competitive review conducted by members of the council's volunteer board of directors and any organization that receives a grant is required to match it at least 21. In effect, the impact of these state funds is doubled on the ground. State appropriations to the council is paid out 100% to support the initiative, energy, creativity, and partnerships in communities throughout the state. In our most recent two years, the council has made 62 grants totaling around $155,000. I've included a list of grants with your handout. I'd invite you to take a look through it to get a sense of some of the important community-based work that is going on throughout the state. These are not large grants. The immediate award last year was around $1,000, but they provide cultural opportunities in all parts of Maine for diverse audiences. We've done a study recently, a survey of grantees. The vast, vast, vast majority of our grantees have annual budgets under $500,000 and most of those have annual budgets under $50,000. So small grants go into small community-based organizations. The funding goes an awfully long way. It makes a big difference in our communities and it reaches Mainers statewide. And I would happily take any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation and the work you do around these grants. It's really helpful and I just thought I'd point out to folks that it's very unusual for an organization to absorb the costs of administering a grant program like this. Typically, there is administrative oversight, you know, anywhere from 8 to 15%. So the fact that all this money goes out to the communities is really laudable and I think it does great work. So thank you to your organization.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for...
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ritter?
Good morning.
Good morning. Senator Hamper and Representative Rotundo, Senator Langley and Representative Cornfield, members of Appropriations and Financial Affairs and distinguished members of Education and Cultural Affairs, thank you very much for bringing this testimony today. My name is Jamie Ritter. I'm the Maine State Librarian and one of the newbies that Mr. Merrill referred to earlier. The Maine State Library in its simplest terms is established to provide library services to the people of Maine. We help...